All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the Monday, November 4th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting into order. As always, our first item of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. This evening, we have Pastor Crystal Owens of Moyac Assembly of God here to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. Let us pray. Father, we worship you this evening, and we humbly come before you, Lord, as we seek to do business for our county and guide it, Lord God. Father, I pray that you would give the board wisdom as they serve this community. I pray that you would just put respect in the people's hearts this evening, that we would be able to see each other through different perspectives. Father, we don't always have to agree, but we can always get along. We can be kind, and I pray that we don't seek for uniformity, but we do seek unity. We ask that you would prosper the businesses here in this community and that you would bless the residents. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right. Next up this evening is our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder from our attorney.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflict of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
You got anything?
I disclosed in the last meeting, and then we continued. If I need to disclose it again, I'll disclose it again. I know that if you would state if some of these people weren't here, that I don't have a conflict of interest, that I have a duty to vote. Isn't that what we said last time?
For for, are you talking about?
Yeah, talking about the old business PB 2419. I know it's going to get continued, but.
You disclosed some information, and the board decided not to move to recuse you, and so you do have a duty to vote on that. I think tonight, we're just, y'all are planning on continuing it, but you are correct.
Thank you. You don't have any current financial dealings, right?
Zero.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes for the agenda this evening? Can I have a motion for approval, please?
They're moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Public comment is up next. I see we have some people signed up for Flora Farm. I know we put it out. I just want to let everyone in the audience know, and Megan just talked about it a little bit, we will not be taking action on that tonight except to move it to our November 18th meeting. The applicant had a conflict of interest and had to be in Camden tonight at their border commissary.
Scheduled conflict.
Scheduled conflict. So not a conflict of interest, scheduled conflict. Thank you, Paul.
But that'll be voted on, though, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, it will be. But it is a reasonable conflict, so we will likely be moving that, as he cannot attend. And with that, I will open public comment at this time. First person to have signed up this evening is Susan Powers.
How can I go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Powers, and I live at 251 Greenview Road. I'm here to talk about Flora. I know you're not voting on it tonight, but I still wanted to speak. I do agree that we need more apartments in our area. Not everyone can afford or want to purchase a house. For example, my daughter's 25 years old, probably not a good time in her life to buy a house, but she can't find an apartment and have to live in Virginia. But having said that, I don't feel that location is the best choice for apartments. First of all, if you've ever been on that road when a middle school dance is getting in and out, that's can be a traffic, you know, boggle there. And also, they do close that road when Nightingale's Landing, so that could be an issue with apartments being there. Also, we talked a little bit about the sewage and the sewage moratorium. I did follow up with David May at DQ. It doesn't sound like that moratorium is going to be lifted anytime soon. They do have more work to do. And also, too, they currently, with that moratorium, they have a, do have a permit for called Pump and Hall. So for the new houses being built in Foss, once they get the permits for those, they have to pump a certain number of gallons out of our septic system and take it away to be processed. So depending on how many houses, it first starts at 4,000 gallons, goes to 8,000 gallons, and the 4,000 gallons is that's a pumper truck. So they have to take a pumper truck of sewage away when they start putting new houses ready to be occupied in Foss. And also, too, North Carolina Public Staff has also issued an order disapproving the affiliate agreement before EnviroLink, which is the company that services our sewer, and Currituck Water and Sewer, which is the company that owns the sewage system. There's a lot of paperwork in that. I've read that. I'm not an expert, but from reading it, it sounds like their issue with that is that Currituck Water and Sewer and EnviroLink are owned and controlled by the same person, Mike Myers, and they're having a problem with that. It's been that way since they started talking about this three years ago. I don't know why that's a problem all of a sudden. I've reached out to Public Staff and David May as well as what that means for our sewage, because if that agreement's not approved, that definitely impacts our sewage, in my opinion. So I think, too, so I just feel like, I ask you to not approve this when you talk about it next, in the next few weeks, not approve this until our sewage is approved or fixed and the moratorium's listed, everything's ready to go. It is working a lot better. We're not having problems, but, you know, I think this additional load could definitely change that.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Susan a question?
Of course.
Yeah.
Susan, and I, you know, I play golf at Eagle Creek, might eat lunch there sometimes. I mean, do they have, and I know, I swear, like, every time I ride through there, is a septic pumping truck on site? I mean, typically?
So, yeah, so that's part of, they have a consent order in order to operate, and one of the requirements of the consent order is to have a sewage truck on site at all times. I didn't tell you this, because I'm not supposed to go back there, but there is a sewage, there was a sewage truck back there on Sunday. So as far as I can tell, they do have one, and that helps us, too, because part of the problem in the past is when our sewage went down, they would have to call sewage trucks to come out. So hopefully with the sewage truck, they can address a small problem, because also that's why it became such a big problem, is they weren't addressing these little issues with individual houses, and then it just kind of snowballed to, you know, entire neighborhoods. So.
Okay. I just was curious, because I've seen, and I think the guy, one of the people that work, I think, is local and is like, is on site within like 10, 15 minutes.
Yeah, and I see the EnviroLink trucks out there all the time. In the past, I would know there was a sewage problem, because I would come home and I would see a sewage truck in the neighborhood, and I'd know automatically something's going on with the sewage. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, next up, I have James Memes. Good evening, Mr. Memes.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Chairman. James Memes, 105 Chestnut. Believe it or not, I'm here tonight about a different topic. I want the people of this board and our community to be informed, but also to think about something for a moment. Every time I've come up here, I've blamed a quote-unquote "expert" and asked that the board listen to its constituents. Experts have put us where we are today. Imagine for a moment your favorite something being removed from your life that has a significant value, something your grandparents, mom, dad, they took you to as a child, a location that is your go-to with your children for memories, a place of peace, fun, and enjoyment. Imagine the antidepressant that works for you no longer being available. The experts have done it again. They failed us. You can't tell me the solution is for me to go to a school to be an expert at everything. The solution is to stand up and help the citizens of this county do the right thing. Most fishermen don't disclose their favorite fishing spot, but I'll tell you, mine is and has been for all of my life, Cory's Ditch. Experts are trying to replace the bridge and close down the transiting area, not temporarily, but permanently. Imagine closing the waterway at Coinjock Canal. This has come from a reliable source, and as I've told many of you, I won't name the individual, but the statement is a fact. I can go on for days how this will affect my life, but it's clear it won't matter. But I do ask that this board meet with NC DOT and these experts to discuss this wasn't caused by the boaters, but by the experts that failed to do the job correctly the first time, that this will change the livelihoods of many, not even the inclusion of the vast wildlife that are within that ditch, or to reason that that ditch was dug in the first place. Board, please show up to the November 18th meeting regarding Cory's Ditch closure and the bridge repair. Thank you.
So I got, I'll just take a second, because I was in a meeting with Rebecca with NC DOT this week, this past week. They're moving the meeting to Knott's Island, and it's going to be December 9th. And I talked to them, I got them to move it over there, because that's the area that's most going to be affected, right? People on the island. So they will be getting notifications in the mail in the next few days to week. Those are going to go out, and.
7:00 PM, correct?
I believe so. Yep.
It's 3:00, isn't it?
It's 3:00. There's new information coming out, so let's wait till you get the information. Okay, they're, they were going to move over to a location on Knott's Island and have a meeting there. They were looking for a place, they found that, they're going to be sending out that information, so until you get it from them, let's, let's leave that alone. But they're going to be, and I had a frank discussion with them about the very concerns you have, so.
Thank you, Chair.
Going to call them again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Ms. Connie Hedrick.
Thank you. I'm Connie Hedrick. I reside at 296 Summit Farms Trail, and I've been on a little fact-finding mission just to ease my mind. First of all, thank you for giving us the opportunity for public comments. I do want it to be known, as I am not a proponent, I'm not against growth. I believe our community, since I've been here in 10 years, has an opportunity to really thrive, develop, and really look out for the needs and desires for legacy that has come before us and what we have in a safe environment community. So it may have appearance that I am against growth, but I am not. I just want us to really take a good, wise decision on how we approach it for the future as our density gets larger and we have more infiltration and migration from the north than other states. So I listened to the applicant on their first proposal, and the applicant representative made it clear that, or the applicant made it clear that this was not, these apartments were not intended to be workforce housing. Everybody has a different definition of workforce housing. What I did get from them on their original proposal, based on the pivot, was we wanted something that our professionals, young professionals and up-and-coming professionals could afford to live in until they had housing or ownership available to them. They wanted something with mobility, so it was walkable. They wanted something with some adventure, I mean, some amenities that would entice people to be here. And of course, Venture Realty Group was the contractor and the management company that would oversee that. So I went to their Greenbrier Edinburgh location. It's very, very sophisticated. It's very nice. I'm going to present this, and you can pass it if you would. So one of the things that does behoove us is we're looking for professionalism as we're coming in, is we have a retention issue on teachers and staff on a professional level. So on that brochure that I'll send you, a 630-square-foot home, apartment, one bedroom, one-bath apartment, rents for $16.45. Their policy is that you have to have three times the amount of income to be eligible to rent that facility, that apartment. They, the largest one they have is 1,309 square feet. It is a three-bedroom, two-bath. It rents for $23.95 a month. That doesn't include storage, cable, anything else. Based on that policy in Chesapeake, by the company that manages it, they would have to earn $7,185 per month income to qualify for that three-bedroom, two-bath apartment. While we are very professional, it might degrade or diminish some between the Virginia line and North Carolina line, but I doubt the income basis that's going to be more dependent on the overflow on income that already comes from Virginia and other places. I know I'm out of my time. So I'd like you to just take that as consideration for how it might be managed, because we have no control over it once it's done. And then the last comment, please be with me. I did a little more, and this might be Mr. McCord or Chairman McCord. I understand that with our registered sex offenders, I agree with Miss Sandra here. I was looking at it, apartments are really needed here. Ones maybe that not have that kind of income, but the location might be another consideration. It is my understanding that a registered sex offender cannot be within 1,000 feet of a school, daycare, school activity fields, those kinds of things. It's my understanding from what I've read that if a registered sex offender changes their location, they have three days to register. If they come from another state, it's 10 days to register. So I also could not find any conformity to how one would measure that 1,000-feet difference. So what I did was I just took an inlay. That marks a 1,000 feet. And this is for you guys to determine what is appropriate and what's not. That's not, I'm not an expert at that. But the first line that you have where it's come, if you look at the top of it, I just took the garden apartment function. That's it, because it's, it's right there. And it has the highest density with the most mobility in and out of the area. So from the entrance where the bus route is to the back where all the students end, you can see that first line that goes midway to where the pool might be reside by this plant. The other places, the other 1, 2, 3 lines across that represent 1,000 feet at any given point from the ditch line, which would be the school property line. And then, of course, I did take where the baseball fields are at the end. I did take a line and run it from the ditch bank where the baseball fields are towards the garden apartment area. So the applicant did not make mention of any of those things. We talked about school seats and all those things, but we have a very, very safe community here. And it is not a protected class, and there are certain things that you can and cannot ask as registrants or applicants for housing. So I just wanted our police, fire, SROs at our school, at the middle school, perpetually maybe another addition to the middle school, another areas, maybe the location for the apartments are conducive to our needs of our community, but maybe not this location. So, Board, Commissioners, I appreciate you extending my time. Again, I'm not a great public speaker, but I just thought it was information that we might want to consider before you make that decision.
Mr. Chairman, can I address the sex offender thing?
Sure. I think it's an important topic.
I supervise as the captain at the Sheriff's Office. I supervise, there's 58 sex offenders in Currituck County. There is 30 north of Maple Road in Knott's Island and 28 south of Maple Road in Knott's Island, which we check them every month. If somebody moves to a location, if just, and I'm, and I'm not picking on sex offenders, whatever, I'm just, I'm stating the, if they want to move to a location, I have a rangefinder. We have a rangefinder. We measure the distance from point A to point B, similar like you did on this, which is, if something's there first, if a school where obviously like Moyac Middle School's already there, they'd be exempt, they wouldn't be able to go. They would, they would not, whatever's there first, if they are, and I've been to a lot of training across the state on sex offenders. So like, if they are, they can't be within so many feet of playgrounds, they can't be so many, where children, their terminology's, but I'll floor everybody in the room on this one. Two years ago, they're allowed to trick-or-treat. I mean, think about that. That's, that was our state, did that, two or three.
300 feet between a person.
Yeah, they, yeah. They can trick-or-treat if they're nonviolent or not on probation or parole. So that was changed, and like I said, I'm not picking on sex offenders, I'm just stating the, the stuff, so. But that was changed because somebody threatened to sue the state, said they wanted more rights, so they let them trick-or-treat. But it's kind of crazy. I mean, dress up in a costume, go out at night with kids, but, you know, but whatever. I didn't, we didn't make that decision. You can't blame that one on this board.
So, and to shorten it up.
But yeah, to shorten it up is, yeah, to shorten it up, the short version is, whatever's there first, if a playground's there first, they're not coming. If a baseball field's there, where children.
Congregate.
Congregate, they can't go. There is some slight exemptions on bus stops, if it's like, there's a little, but like I said, twice a year, I go to sex offender training.
And the Board of Education does have in their policy and procedures manage how it will be handled if one is there and they have a child in school or they need to attend to school.
Right.
I understand that. However, the reason I brought it up, and the only reason I brought it up, is that we are not going to have any management of that, because that's not in anybody's, it's discriminatory. You cannot do that.
They, okay, they are required by law, and I'm.
Yes.
I've served on the grand jury, and we had all kinds of conversations along this. They are required to register.
Yes.
We're not required to go door-to-door and check everyone's ID, and that's not going to happen. But if they move into an area where they don't, and by the way, and, you know, I don't, I would suspect that it would, doesn't take long to figure out somebody's not, is on, is not on the list they're supposed to be, and when that happens, they go immediately to jail, and it's a, you know, the ends. So.
I just thought we would bring it to your attention.
No, and that's, that's a valid point. They could choose to not tell anybody and move anywhere they want to right now.
Or does it?
Yeah. Like you said.
Or be a bit unextended.
But they can't go within a certain amount of feet, like you stated, from playgrounds, whatever's there first. If a playground was out here in front of the building and children congregated at nighttime, they're not coming here.
I just want our, our people to still thrive in a safe, productive environment, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because no one had mentioned it before.
That's a good point.
Thank you very much.
Very good point. Thank you. All right. Next up, Annette Berg.
Hello.
Hello. We need your name and address for the record, please.
Annette Berg, 214 Tarheel Drive.
Thank you.
I just wanted to kind of go over some of the things that we weren't able to say the last time, based on the Flora Farms. And basically, I just want you to know, I'm just going on what I heard at the last meeting and what was presented at the last meeting. If there's information out there that I didn't hear at the meeting or that wasn't presented, I don't know it. So it, it could be out there. I'm not sure. But what I did want to say is that what I thought the presentation from Mr. Old's lawyers was lacking was the appropriate studies that showed the effects on the school system as far as that 252 home apartments being brought in, and how it will affect the schools, how many students will be brought into each of the schools. None of that information was provided, and I think that's important information to the Board to have in order to make a decision on that. Also, I, I think there needs to be a better study on the traffic. Right now, 168 is weekly between Survey Road and Guinea. There seems to be an accident almost weekly now backing everything up. These 529 new homes, which 252 are, is it 252?
275, I think. 270 some.
277 homes in the 252 apartments. The 252 apartments are in addition to what's already been approved. As it is, the 277 homes going into Flora will cause additional backup. You put 252 more apartment homes in that area, it's just going to be chaos. We can't even get out of our subdivision at Foss as it is half the time. The, the traffic's so backed up, and then that's causing accidents out there. There needs to be, if this is to go forward, there needs to be, and it should be a requirement, that there is a stoplight, either there at Foss or at Flora. Somewhere in there, there needs to be a stoplight. My, my thought on it is there's a lot of areas in, in Currituck that apartments would probably more, be more welcomed off other side roads that don't affect the 168 so much. That being said, even with the apartments, you know, you have to consider the effect on the schools and our city, our, our county resources. There was a gentleman that presented how the resources were being stressed as it was last meeting, and now you're going to put 252 new apartments in there? I, I don't see how the county can handle it as it is. The other thing that I wanted to address is I didn't hear or don't know of the extents, extent of the research done to bring a store into that location. I do know that I personally contacted several stores that had not been contacted. They, they told me they hadn't been contacted to see anything about, or to be able to invest in the area. Lowe's Stores, which is a North Carolina food grocery store, indicated that they would be interested in this area and would like to know, to know more information. Well, then how come Mr. Old hasn't reached out to them? Do you have in your hands the listing of certain stores? I know he does not have to present it to the public, but do you guys have a listing of stores that he has contacted, that he has actively pursued in order to get in there, or is it just one or two? Because I can see a big store like Publix or Harris Teeter not wanting to come into this area as easily as a smaller store like Lowe's Foods. The, I know I'm up, but the, also the other issue I had was the luxury apartments and not having the, them not being filled. I myself, when our house has been built, have had to stay in apartments, and I know that there's a requirement of three times the, three times the apartment to, salary of three times the cost of the apartment. And if these houses can't be, these apartments can't be filled, a developer is not going to sit there with empty apartments, not being able to fill 252 of them with $7,000 income per month. What happens then? Do they turn into Section 8? Do they sit empty? What happens when we can't fill those with that level of income? This also, this location is also not within the Moyac vision as of a walkable community. I, I read through the Moyac vision. I didn't see anywhere where this 252 housing units located where they are fulfills the Moyac vision. So I consider, I ask you to consider the vision and how it's being changed in order to suit Mr. Old's requirements. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, quick, quick, just a quick comment. The information that we receive, where we're looking at the same information that, that the public sees and gets, so we don't get anything additional, so to answer your question, no, I mean, we didn't. So with anything that was presented, it's the same thing that you saw, so that's all we get to say.
So in that case, I think you, you as Commissioners are owed more information to make that kind of a decision.
Well, I don't think we should get into that at public comment tonight.
Yeah, it's not us to.
But, you know, and I will point out, if you go back in and read the agenda, the actual agenda item, it tells us exactly how many students are generated, down to elementary school, middle school, and high school. Every single time we do a special use permit, that is in the packet. Jenny Turner has started including that in legislative decisions for us, because it, it does have an impact, right? So there are certain things we can consider, and we do have that information. So I would encourage you to go back and just reread the agenda packet and look at the staff comments, because that's what really, they, they have researched this and put the information together for us so that we can make a reasonably informed decision, and then, and then, of course, the applicant gives us their side of the story.
So what I heard was the gentleman before talking about Corolla and the two parcels.
Right.
And how he presented how those two parcels would affect the schools.
That was a special use permit, right? It's a different thing.
Right. But I understand, but he was talking about how those would affect the schools.
Right.
And I don't see how, with the limitations that we have on open spots in the school and the fact that we have so many substitute teachers teaching in our schools, how it can handle the number of students being brought in.
Right.
And I just thought that that should be something that's addressed and how that's going to be handled.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have Eli Kendrick.
Good evening, sir. Eli Kendrick, 405 Fost Boulevard.
Thank you.
The Newtown Homes. It sounds like most everybody's already said a lot of the things that I'm here concerned about, the Flora development. I won't belabor the point. I think a lot of people are just concerned about how it's going to impact everything. So I think that's going to be discussed at a later date. I didn't realize that was being moved, so I'm just going to move on from there.
Okay.
Just to reiterate the traffic issue, I have a daughter about to enter into driving, and it's terrifying for them to make that left-hand turn out of that Fost area. There's also the railroad tracks there. There was an accident there just a few weeks ago because I think somebody stopped like a bus or something, and there's so much traffic there, there's just accidents around. The railroad track is also at Fost. So it's scary. An additional traffic light would obviously help. I don't know what that looks like at this time. I've tried to look up documentation between my jobs and everything else, but it would be nice. But it would also back up the traffic already that's going on in Moyac. You have one wreck or one person in the Food Lion parking lot holding things up and you can't get home. My wife was stuck for several hours trying to get our kids home when the situation was at the Food Lion parking lot. That isn't really a good way to go around. So just, I have concern about traffic. I'm sure everybody else does too. It gets backed up pretty easily in that area. Don't know what is going on with that. I'm sure there's studies and whatnot, but curious if there's any update on that for traffic lights, especially at Fost.
There are none. So that's a DOT function, just to answer your briefly.
We have no authority to.
They'll tell them when it's time, based on the exact things you mentioned.
Okay, I've tried to talk to the HOA, not the HOA, I guess the developer, they can't really give info. So I guess as leadership, you know, I'm asking, is there a way?
I mean, this board, we can request studies and request something, but if DOT makes a decision that nope, then nothing we can do about that.
Okay, all right. And then the last thing, just real quick. So we had the developer, I think it's Moyac LLC and Fost send out an email today through the Goodman Management Group saying, hey, you know, no leases shorter than 12 months. Little known to me, I didn't know developers should make such drastic decisions with no democratic process whatsoever. We don't have an HOA yet at Fost, so we can't vote on anything. We can't make a decision together as a group. Neither here nor there, it is what it is. I just, I have a little bit of trauma from Sanders Crossing in Camden County, if you're familiar with it, where the developer went bankrupt and didn't fix the roads, the state codes peeled on out of there, and they had basically orphaned style roads that were existing in the community. Now they're going to cost millions of dollars to fix and nobody really has the money. So I guess my main concern is, I know that the developer has a lot of authority in that matter, but I just want some accountability and making sure that everyone here is aware and just watching what's going on and keeping up and making sure that the large sewage trucks that have to drive back there, they're going to mess up the roads, they're heavy, it's okay, but they need to be fixed and turned over to NC DOT as soon as possible so the state can take over the roads and we don't end up with these orphaned road situations, which is a problem throughout North Carolina, it happens. So just want to bring that to attention.
Very much is, thank you. Okay, that was the last person I have signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public comment and we will move on with the agenda. Thank you all for your comments this evening. All right, next up is County Commissioners' Report. And Owen, you haven't been here in a while, would you like to lead us off this evening?
I'll be short and sweet. Good to be back. Tomorrow is a very important day, and I hope if you have not already voted, you will take the opportunity to exercise your responsibility as a citizen and go vote because these young kids in this room here tonight are going to be dependent on what we do tomorrow in this election. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Mr. McCord.
November is the month of gratitude. So like I said, be thankful for everything we have, it's just perfect. Like I said, I would just like to, I took a beating on social media last night. I'm a law enforcement officer, I'm a human being. I can take it. I have thick skin. I don't care, I can take it 24/7. But when they attack your family, that's just kind of the line drawing. So, but like I said, I'm going to read something in a second, not as a law enforcement officer. I was a magistrate for a year, just to educate. Everybody here was a magistrate for a year, and people do this on social media. I think social media is the devil personally, that's just my opinion. If you want to post some pictures and look at them, that's cool, but if you want to go online and you want to take shots at people, take shots at their business, whatever, to each their own, like I said. Like I said, this is my personal North Carolina crimes book, my personal one, when I was a magistrate in 2013. This is something, and then we wonder why bullying's like a problem sometimes in the schools. I'm going to read two general statutes to everybody. I can take a beating, I'll take it all day long, don't care, but when they start attacking my family, that's when the line, I'm an elected official, I'm a law, I get cussed out like daily. I mean, I'm dealing with it. But tonight, I'm Kevin McCord. So this is what's, and when I was a magistrate, I've charged people with this, and it's a chargeable offense, repeated use of electronic communication, mail or communication to harass, et cetera. It's, look it up, and this is recorded. General Statute 14-196.3B2 reproduced, I'm sorry, reproduced above. A person is guilty of this offense if they electronically mail or communicate another repeatedly for the purpose to abuse, annoy, threaten, terrify, harass, or try to embarrass a person. There's case law all across the state. So if you want to go on social media and attack me, I don't care, it's fine. I know who I am. I had so many, where I say the gratitude, so many nice people in the community reach out and say, hey, Kevin's lived here his whole life. My sister taught here for 30 years, she was Teacher of the Year, volunteered, whatever. I coached almost 100 Parks and Rec teams. I coached teams when I didn't even have a kid on it. Dana Parker can attest, she would sign me up to mentor problem children that I would mentor, not by choice, but I was, you know, but like I said, you'd be the nice person. So people want to attack my character, that's fine, that's their God-given right, but like my family's the line. And here's number two, permitting cyber stalking. So if you are an administrator of a social media page, this has been charged, and if somebody doesn't think me, look it up. You're an administrator of one of those pages and notorious where they just bully and attack people and all that stuff, and I'm not even talking me, I'm talking in general. They can be charged. They would be guilty of that offense if they knowingly permit an electronic communication device under his/her command to be used for the purpose prohibited. And the other statute where I read, use an electronic mail or communication to threaten or extort somebody, harass, so forth and so on. That's General Statute 14-196.3B4. I've lived here 41 years, I'm 50 years old, I'm an honest person, I disclose everything. I disclose that I worked at Morris Farms when I was 14 because they came before us and voted. If anybody knows me, I'm Citizen Kevin McCord right now, I'm an honest person and I'll take the attacks, but when they attacked my wife, it makes me not want to be in law enforcement, that's all I'll just say. So, but like I said, I'm the bigger person, and I just wanted to read that to update so people, and then we wonder why we have bullying in schools. It's because sometimes the adults like to just chime in and be bullies. And like I said, I'm thankful I live here, I love it here. I'm not moving. Probably will move out of this seat in 26 months when my term is over. I've had enough, this is my third term. But like I said, this is my crimes book, I have the receipt for it, nothing to do with the sheriff's office. I wanted to read that just to educate because it is a problem. And social media, not just because of me, other people, people just go on there. I mean, like, you're adults, you know what I'm saying? Be an adult. If I have a problem with somebody, I can talk to them. I mean, that's what you're supposed to do. So that's Christmas parade.
Happy news.
Happy news. December 6th, if you want to participate, come, it's free. If you buy food, if you want food, it's obviously you have to pay for food. Nothing's free, but the parade is free. We have, last year we had 77 floats, different things, it's amazing parade. I will put some of our floats up with the Great Bridge Parade. We had some awesome floats last year. You can email me, you can look on the county website, you can email my commissioner email, you can look on the sheriff's office and email either or to sign up. I have a dummy down flyer if somebody's not very computer savvy, but our Christmas parade is December 6th. The festivities kickoff at 6:00 PM for the tree lighting and all that good stuff, and that's a positive thing. And like I said, gratitude, the month of November, I'm thankful, I love it here, I love the people, and just wanted to put that out there. It's at our YMCA where the Public Safety Building and everything. It's a great parade. It's right at a mile long, and there's tons of parking all over everywhere. And this year, we have actually a different entrance to make it easier with the floats. We'll put the message boards out there, it's a 14-hour day of setting everything up and cleaning it all up, but it's an amazing event. Last year, we, every year it's doubled, tripled, whatever. Now, like I said, we're almost to 100 floats. And Dennis? It's on the county website, county website, and it's brought to you by the North Carolina Cooperative Extension, Cameron Lowe, I went to high school with her, she's great people, and her staff, Sheila Gregory, everybody, they are awesome, as well as myself and the FOP, Kerr Tech FOP Lodge 89. Like I said, free, if you want to put a float in, all that good stuff, but look on the county website or the cooperative extension thing. A great parade, December 6th. I'm done, thank you.
Paul, good luck following that up.
Yeah, Paul.
Paul, you get 30 seconds.
So the first thing is, I played volleyball, adult volleyball with Cameron at the Y.
She's an athlete.
Yeah, anyway, so there's that, but in all seriousness, folks, I want to congratulate Kerr Tech County. We had over 10,000 early voters, right? To put it in perspective, we have approximately 25,000 registered voters in the county, over 10,000 showed up and early voted. That's the kind of participation that not only we should be proud of doing, but that is, that's our most, one of our most important jobs because it's only through that that, you know, if you want change in the county, you want change in the state, you want change in the federal government, that's the only way we're going to get it done, folks. So if you didn't get a chance to come out and early vote, tomorrow's your day, today is celebration, and it's the most important thing you could do tomorrow if you haven't voted already. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Mr. Staub?
Okay, thank you. Want to give a shout out, first of all, to our EMS crew in Grandy. My church held a trunk or treat, I go to Mount Zion in Grandy, and it was a little dark in the back because, you know, it started getting dark early quicker, it seemed. And we were there setting up, and the EMS crew of Justin Marsigley, Matthew Finnamore, and Alisa Miller showed up in their ambulance to help give out candy and to support us with our hay rods. And that right there is the epitome of the heart of a servant. And they, they made these young kids that showed up so excited. It was already, you know, free candy, so what's not to be excited about, but when you add an ambulance and people in uniform and lights, it just, it touched me that they would just show up and see if they could help. And that's the kind of people that we have in so many of our departments, and I'm so thankful for them. So thanks to those three young people for their service, and I'm just eternally grateful that that's the kind of people we have. Another shout out to our staff. At the last meeting, I asked about the Operation Green Light to show our support for our veterans and to highlight the struggles and the difficulties that some of veterans have as they transition from the military to civilian life. They have made it happen, and for the next week, if you drop by our government buildings, they'll be lit up in green. And I'm proud that this year we've made it even better for our veterans who we owe so much, the hiring with Camden County, our Veteran Service Officer. It's the very least we can do for the people that have given so much. So I'm thankful and thank you to our staff for doing that. And then finally, I just want to just follow up on the elections. As a retired civics teacher, I won't give you a civic lesson on the importance of voting, but I will say this, when I took this job and sought election and then reelection, it is important for me to listen to you, the voters. I have answered numerous phone calls, more emails than I care to count, but that's important because I take seriously the fact that you elected me to listen, and you elected me to do the will of the people, and I promise you for the next four years, that's what I'm going to do. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Kitty?
Well, I'll talk about elections also. When you go vote tomorrow, remember you have to go to your precinct. You cannot vote at the election board office. One-stop voting is over. If you don't know where your precinct is, give the election board a call or look it up on the internet, but if you give them a call, their number is 232-2525. The polls are open from 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM. And speaking of veterans, remember that we've got Veterans Day coming up, and make sure you do thank a veteran because they're the ones who give us the privilege to go out and vote. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Mike, what's on your mind this evening?
Well, just real quick, I know at the last meeting I'd asked the citizens and our community to send emails and phone calls, and I just want to thank everyone for doing that. I did listen to all the phone calls, I did read all the emails. That's the type of input that's important to me and the rest of the board members to hear you, and I do, I just want to appreciate the taking the time to do that, and I did read them and listened to them all. Secondly, as far as veterans go, you know, we do have three veterans on the board. You know, I want to thank Chairman Bob and Commissioner Beaumont for your services. And I'm a veteran as well, so we, we appreciate the support, and our military really does a lot for, you know, for our freedoms out there. And lastly, I sit in the Albemarle Agent Health Board, the executive board member, and last week, we had a meeting with our local office right across the, right next door to us here. Good meeting with the staff in there, met our new nurse practitioner, she's excited to start serving our community as citizens. One thing I found out, we had a report that the number of visits has increased, which is great, which means that a service that's being provided to our citizens, another medical location to get your prescriptions, sick calls, physicals, you know, anything you need, don't think of it as your old health department, this is actually a medical facility. They take all insurances, they have payment plans, they do referrals, I mean, they do a lot there, and they're excited. I mean, the amount of visits was almost a third, up a third from previously, so it's getting out there. Please take that, use that as a resource, and we're looking to try to get a location. So it's, they're on the website and they're right next door. So other than that, just thank you for the turnout and hope everybody gets a chance to vote tomorrow. That's all, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can, the nurse practitioner, I had the question asked of me today, is she there four days a week?
Right now, they're, they're, they're trying to, yes, right now she is, but they're trying to get a second one in there, and we're trying to get a location in the south end of the county, and then use that person to maybe float around a little bit. So, but we're trying to work, and then I meant, one thing I meant to mention as well is, like Commissioner McCord, I did grow up in the county, went to the school systems here, my mother retired from the school systems, very familiar with our school systems and how the schools grew over the years, the expansion, so I have a lot of history of this county, seen it grow, so. And I was in the band.
He was in the band.
I was in the band.
Right.
Anyways, that was it, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll wrap it up, I'll be quick this evening. Just thank you to everyone for your comments this evening, good thoughts. It's been mentioned, and I just want to reassure people, you know, that we don't have, we may not have enough fire service or EMS or the Sheriff's Department. Every year the board meets and we have our budget meetings, and we, it's in this room that we do that, or if not, we'll hold it over at another building if we need to. But we have that every year to go through that, and we, and we come in, we have staff come in to us, our professionals, our department heads will recommend to us what they need. We know, for instance, that we are in need of another fire department slash EMS station in Moyac. Obviously, that is the, kind of the population center of the county for the most part. And so we're actively looking for that location. We've discussed whether it goes on the west side of the highway, the east side of the highway, the north end of Moyac, the south end of Moyac. If you're on the south end, do they get a write-out because the calls are going to[1749.27] If you're on the south end, do they get a write-out because the calls are going to be headed up, you know, mostly to the north. That's where the population's at. So this board and previous boards have been actively engaged in that process. And if it comes to the point where we can no longer provide adequate services, the problem with that is we're going to have to go to a paid service. And if you think your taxes are high now, wait till that happens. So for now, we have a volunteer fire service and they're backed up somewhat by our EMS. Some of our EMS are trained to actually move their, the trucks around and get them on-scene. So if you're coming to a scene as a volunteer, you may already have your piece of apparatus there, you have to just jump out of the car, put your gear on and start doing whatever it is that you're required to do at that scene. Same thing with the Sheriff's Department, they come into us every year. Hey, we needed four new deputies. The school, the school system came to us along with the Sheriff's Department and said, we need school resource officers. This board said, okay, we'll fund for that and we did. So we have school resource officers. So we have been very active in making sure that we meet the demands of our county as best we can. Is it going to be perfect? No, because it is a volunteer system. And our volunteers do a great job considering the call volume they have, especially during the summer, when you're trying to move, make those left or right turns on Saturday or Sunday and you live on 168 or have to get on the highway, everyone knows what that's like. Well, the fire departments have the same problem. That is literally a point of discussion about where to locate this fire department, just based on that problem we have here. So anyway, I just wanted to say that. Thank you all for your comments this evening and we'll jump into the rest of the agenda with the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder that county administrative offices will be closed on Monday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. Also, Food Bank of the Albemarle is hosting their 28th Mayflower Food Drive in the parking lot at Moayak Visitor Center on Friday, November 22nd from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And Saturday, November 23rd from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And a final note on the Knott's Island Bridge replacement that was discussed earlier, that meeting has been tentative, tentatively rescheduled to December 9th, that's Monday, December 9th. And the public meeting will be held from 5:00 to 7:00 at Knott's Island Elementary School and the gymnasium. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Megan, anything for me this evening?
No report.
Thank you, all right. Next up, we have a public hearing. Item one is PB 24-23, Michael Bedell, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Use Standards, Section 4.2.1, Agricultural Uses, to establish required setback for manure stockpiles associated with animal husbandry in the single-family residential isolated district and to expand the yearly prohibition period of, period of manure stockpiles by one month extending from August 31st to September 30th. Good luck getting that one out again. Good evening, Ms. Jenny, how are you?
Good evening, thank you. So this is a text amendment sponsored by Mr. Michael Bedell, who is a resident of Knott's Island. And this particular text amendment applies only to the SFI zoning district, which is single-family residential isolated, which consists of Knott's Island and Gibbs Woods only. And it's related to the specific use under agricultural uses of animal husbandry. And it's intended to establish a standard for setbacks for manure stockpiles to be located at least 100 linear feet from lot lines and water sources and also to prohibit manure stockpiles in the SFI district from May 1st until September 30th. Again, this is a text amendment that is specifically tailored to that zoning district and the staff does recommend approval that the, it's consistent with land use goal two of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan that carefully consider the design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses to mitigate compatibility issues. You're familiar with the text amendment review standards that you may consider in deciding whether to adopt or revise or deny a text amendment? And the planning board and planning staff both recommend approval, subject to the consistency statement. And Mr. Bedell is here in the front row, he's waiting patiently for his item.
All right. So you and I talked earlier today about this and one of the things that we had mentioned was, would it be a good idea to expand this to the mainland?
Yeah, I thought about it a little bit more too and I think it may, so the lots on the SFI, in the SFI district are generally larger and required to be larger than on the mainland. The use is allowed on lots that are 20,000 square foot or less. It may impact more properties on the mainland, I'm not really sure.
Right.
So, but yeah, I mean, the board did want to consider that. I think in speaking with the county attorney that.
As we talked about it, I wanted to bring it up, but you know, obviously, it would take a little bit more thought process than doing it here tonight, obviously, so.
Yeah, because people are allowed to have a horse, single-family residential.
This doesn't apply to horses, right?
This is animal husbandry. So equestrian facility would be where people just have a horse as a pet and have manure stockpiles, it wouldn't apply in that instance.
Because we have a lot of small farmlands and farms in the mainland that these.
Yeah, would it affect? That's what I, would it affect? That's what I was going to ask, the same thing like Commissioner Payman said, would it affect something if they had like a 10-acre parcel and rope all, you know what I'm saying, the five acres of, I mean, would they, would that affect that or no?
And yes, if the use was animal, animal husbandry, it would affect it, yes.
I think we have a couple in Shawboro, I believe, don't we?
Unless it were a voted farm.
This is just for Knott's. This is just for, okay, okay, that's what, I didn't know, but will this, is this?
This is for Knott's Island, Chairman White mentioned, did the board want to consider it county-wide?
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, all right, so we'll just, we're just focused on Knott's Island for now.
Okay, that's all, that's all I knew, all right, cool.
All right, thank you, Jenny. Mr. Bedell, would you like to come on up to the mic, talk to us?
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Mike Bedell, I live at 206 South End Road in Knott's Island and I appreciate all of you taking the time to hear me out. I spoke in front of the planning commission not too long ago and I kind of let them know why I had proposed this. Like a lot of things, you might not give too much thought about it until it personally affects you and then you kind of get your heart in it. So I've lived at my current location for about five years and within the last year we had new neighbors move in. And to try and make a long story short, they were trying to claim that part of our property was theirs. After numerous court cases, paying thousands of dollars for surveys, attorneys and all that, I was able to prove that my property was exactly where I said it was and they had to subsequently, they were ordered by Judge Trivid to remove numerous fences and all sorts of items that were under construction or already had been constructed on my property. As a result of that loss on their part, I assume they were pretty bitter about it because large piles of manure started appearing along the shared property line. And that's where this amendment kind of stems from. You know, I said, this can't be, this can't be legal. And I go start looking at it, I'm like, well, the way it's written, it kind of is right now. And my thought on it was, I kind of feel like, let's say I was your neighbor, I don't feel like I should be able to put a giant pile of manure right on your property line so that every time you walk outside, especially in the summer, the dick of the summer is bad. That's part of the reason for requesting to extend it from August to September because September is still pretty hot around here. And, you know, likewise, I don't feel like a neighbor should be able to put it right on my property line. My feeling is that, I feel like it's reasonable to request that if it's your animals, you should have to put that within your property and I feel like 100 feet isn't, isn't too crazy.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions for?
So this includes all farm animals to include horses?
There's a definition in the UDA for husbandry. I looked it up early today, it's basically hoofed animals, but it's, it's really dealing with having more than one, not just having, you know, a couple of horses on your property.
And I'm just asking that because is there anything that, if this is passed, is there anything that's going to still allow them to pile heaps of whatever from another animal on that, near the property line? That's, I mean, well, I mean, yes, I mean, you do this and they say, okay, well then I'll just pile up all this stuff from another animal right here and then who's going to determine where it's from?
All right.
Okay. I mean, I'm just, if this is for to eliminate the problem of being on the property line, then I'm just, if we're going to, if we're going to do this, it should be, you know, it could cover a lot, any type of pile of stuff like that.
Mr., can I, Mr. Bedell, how many acres do you have? How is your property?
That's what the intent was. Short of 20, the neighbors have about five. And I mean, they have a number of, a sizable number of pigs and a horse, like a tiny horse.
And how close is this to your home?
Their home is 109 feet from my, even though we're on Knott's Island, I didn't think about it when we had the house built because the people that lived there at the time, retired Currituck County Sheriff Deputy, very nice people, wonderful, beautiful relationship with them, so I didn't really think about it, how the 109 feet in proximity. It was when the new neighbors moved in and it was like, oh, wow.
Glenn Chaney was your neighbor, wasn't he?
He was wonderful.
That's what I thought.
Wonderful man. God rest his soul. But then, then it was like, oh, wow, this, this is, this is a huge problem. So the stockpiles are, I mean, their house is probably 20, so it's probably 70, 80 feet from my door.
So I guess, so Jenny, is this written that would stop any type of stockpiling then or could they stockpile something else there?
It says in the SFI.
When you say something else, do you mean, what do you mean by?
Another animal, I mean.
Other manure?
Yeah.
Well, it's related to any manure associated with the animal husbandry use on the property.
So that would, so I just want to make sure we're covering, if he's trying to protect his pile, I want to make sure there's no loophole in there.
They put a chicken.
Well, chicken coop right next to it.
We'd have to address that in another part.
Yeah, well, I'm just, okay.
Right. So my, my challenge is, and don't misunderstand that the nuisance, I get that, right? But, you know, as a horse owner, and I know that's not covered in here either, but the number one way of managing parasites and animals is typically to stockpile manure in the piles so that it permits them to compost. Heat kills the parasites and then turns the material into something that can then be used as fertilizer everywhere else type thing. So my concern is, and I don't, I'm not familiar with the track, I don't, but, you know, what are we now asking, that it all has to be carted off?
No, that it's just about a setback.
100 feet, just so, like all the animal shelters, dwellings and pens are required to be 100 feet from property lines. And this would also require that the feces, the piles, the collected piles of feces that you're stockpiling also be placed 100 feet.
But it says can't exceed six feet in height. And it has nothing to do with, says, manure stockpile should not exceed six feet in height, A, shall be located at least 100 feet from the lot lines, B, and water sources and not be permitted during the period, during the months, right? So I'm going to tell you, from a manure perspective, height is king because that's where you generate the most heat, number one. Number two, not being able to do that during the prime, and again, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, but I, my issue is, the time to turn manure into compost is the months that we're identifying, I get it, that's, but that's why those are the most active months.
Is this, I just want, I want to get something clear from Jenny, if I can just interrupt for a second. So B, under the maintenance required, manure stockpile should not exceed six feet in height and shall not be permitted during the period from May 1st to August 31st, that is currently on the books. That's what's allowed, not allowed right now.
Right.
So all he, he's really asking to do is extend that by 30 days and move the pile away from the edge of the property.
Which I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, well, whatever. Okay, so now we've got, because now we wind up with a five-foot, three, you know, five-foot, 10-inch pile that's 100 feet long. In other words, volume is going to be more of a quantifier than height. I don't, I'm not saying our ordinance before was any better than whatever. And the fact that we're not striking through the previous one, that one still remains everywhere else, is that?
Right.
So the only thing we're adding is in the SFI?
Correct.
Right.
Yep, I mean, keeping it 100 feet.
Okay, well then, would it not, if we're going to go to September 30th, would it not make sense to adopt Section B and to reflect the same dates or?
It could, I mean, this is his text amendment that he's brought forward, so this was his language proposed specifically for Knott's Island.
Yeah, because I haven't heard from anybody, I mean, with all the farms in the mainland, I don't think we'll have touched that right now.
So we had to just, we'd have to amend B to match C or make B and C one, maybe? In the SFI district, oh, okay, I got it. Yep.
I just think, well, change B to reflect September 30th.
B, uh.
Is anywhere.
Is anywhere, right. C is just where he's talking about on Knott's Island where it's obviously a problem, so. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing and as always, we do open the floor to the public to speak. I do not have anyone signed up this evening. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item this evening? All right, nobody wants to talk about that? Okay, I'll close the public comment and.
Be happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 24-23, Michael Bedell, text amendment because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of Imagine Currituck 2040 Plan, including land use plan goal two. In addition to that, Mr. Chairman, I would also like to recommend the change of August 31st to September 30th in Section B of Section 4, Maintenance Required, in order to be consistent in our, in our calendar month.
Let me check with the attorney, that's a county-wide change.
I want to speak to that, yeah, so that would, we would not be able to do that tonight because that's more expansive than what was published.
Then I strike that addition and just stick with the original.
Okay.
Can I ask a question before we, and I was most likely going to second it, but my question is, and I'm not trying to be funny, who's, who's measuring the heights of the piles, who's, I mean like?
Sheriff's Department.
I thought you were going to say that. I was going to, I was going to volunteer Owen, but.
You said you have a device that can stand in the middle and get.
No, I'm, in all seriousness.
You're six feet tall.
I'm 6'4".
Our code enforcement officers will respond to those complaints and do the research, investigation and measuring.
If it's taller than you, they got to run.
I tried to ask a serious question, you guys had to, no, I was just kidding. I just, I'll second his motion, but I wanted to know who was going to enforce it.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hall of favor? Any opposed? All right, hearing none it carries, thank you. You're all done, sir, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, next up, PB 24-21, Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan. Request for a land use plan amendment to adjust allowable densities on the mainland and revise the future land use map for the Currituck Station area. The proposed amendments include reclassifying 1,032 acres from G3 to O2 and 599 acres from G3 to G2 and 796 acres from G3 to G1. And I'm not going to read all this other stuff in here, it's an inch in the packet.
Good choice.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. This is an amendment to the land use plan. This was discussed at the June 17th work session where we talked about current densities as well as Currituck Station mapping and firstly, trying to adjust the allowable densities to be more consistent with the ordinance allowances and to revise the future land use map and the, and the land use plan related to the Currituck Station area since the board did remove the zoning districts from the ordinance for Currituck Station plan development. Just really briefly, the, bless you.
Gosh. Talking about horses.
These are, just briefly, these are the land use plan transects of the future land use map and some of these are located on the Currituck Station track that will be up for amendment tonight. So there's the O2 reserved lands, which is generally privately owned property that may have some environmentally sensitive areas, so you can see that's the light green on the map. The dark green is the O1, which is preserved lands, which is generally not in private ownership. There's the G1 low-density growth, which is more similar to the limited service that we used to have in the county, that's the yellowish color here. There's the G2 controlled growth, which is where it's more similar to the prior full-service designation. The G3 mixed-use centers and corridors, the burgundy, which is definitely more full-service. And the G4 village centers, which are areas that have some potential for developing small village centers in the county. And that's pink here on your map, currently where we are is a village center. There's a couple policies of the land use plan, land use goal one, to encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for their location. And then land use policy 1.1, that the future land use map is a guide for decision-making, planning for infrastructure. the future land use map is a guide for decision-making, planning for infrastructure, and conservation, and should not be the sole basis for land use decisions. At our, the work session in June, we talked about the existing densities, and this is on the mainland, and over on the left here, you can see there's the zoning districts where you, where you have some residential density potential here on the mainland, the agricultural, single-family mainland, mixed residential, then there's conditional mixed residential and planned development mixed. And you can see with respect to the land use plan transects along the top, the maximum density that you can achieve. And you can see here that the most density you can achieve with a straight rezoning or a straight rezoning district or existing zoning district is two. And with conditional rezoning, there's the possibility to achieve up to three dwelling units per acre based on the current ordinance. This is a chart that shows the proposed changes to the density within the land use plan, in the land use plan and in your packet, you'll see there are the northern mainland future land use map with the chart at the bottom that has the maximum densities based on subareas. There's the lower Currytuck section as well, this just has it all in one chart, so we can look at it all together. You can see the first change is to the O2 transect to increase the maximum density from one dwelling unit per three acres, which is .33, up to .4 dwelling units per acre. Just then, as, as an example, the board may remember the Ashbrook Estates subdivision where it was a property that was zone agriculture, the land use plan classified it as O2. And so the applicant came in and adjusted, amended the future land use map to G1, so they could develop up to .4 dwelling units per acre with 60% open space. So in agricultural zoning, you have .33 dwelling units per acre with 50% open space or .4 with 60% open space. And so we talked about in the work session, changing the maximum density to be consistent with the agricultural zoning of the ordinance, so the land use plan would not be required and it would be more straightforward for someone that had agriculture property in the county understanding the maximum density that they, that could be achieved there. So that's what's shown here in this column. Then the other change we talked about was with respect to the Currytuck Station area and G3 in general, which did include some areas of Moayak that weren't in the Currytuck Station area. And the, um, the land use plan said up to 12 dwelling units per acre subject to the Currytuck Station master plan. This change is proposing that to be consistent with our current densities, which is up to three dwelling units per acre. Then there's a change in the Grandy subarea in the G3 mixed use centers. It was directed to change from three to four to up to three dwelling units without sewer or six to 10 to up to four dwelling units with sewer or as established in a civic master plan, so some reduction in the maximum density that could be achieved there. Then in the G4 village centers in Grandy, it was directed to change the density from up to two dwelling units per acre without sewer to up to three dwelling units per acre without sewer and to keep the up to four dwelling units per acre with sewer or as established in a civic master plan. And then in the Point Harbor subarea, we changed up to two dwelling units per acre without sewer or up to four with sewer to up to three dwelling units per acre or as established in a civic master plan. And then you can see at the bottom of the, on this chart, there's a, a statement that says with respect to maximum allowable densities, the term sewer shall mean a state permitted centralized wastewater system. We had talked at that work session about determining what sewer meant with respect to this, this table. I did hand out, and we did have a work session with some of the representatives from Alamo Regional Health a couple weeks ago, I think, maybe a month, I think it was two weeks ago. And I started thinking about what might be a better approach for these changes, and you have a sheet that looks like this printed out for you, and you can see that basically what I did was I went in and, under the Grandy subarea, instead of separating out with and without sewer, you can have just an overall maximum up to four dwelling units per acre or as established in the civic master plan, and then the ordinance will determine sewer, what, what type of wastewater may be allowed there. And then also, just keep in mind, as we looked at the chart that had the maximum densities here, existing, that anything that's gonna get more than two dwelling units per acre is gonna come before this board as a conditional or, or the future board as a conditional rezoning, so. And then the same thing for the G4 village centers, that instead of having two standards, it would be up to four or as established in the civic master plan. And then in the, in the Point Harbor area, we'd already taken out the sewer difference anyway. So that, with that, if this is the approach the board wants to go with, we'll just delete the statement that says, you know, with respect to maximum density, sewer means state permitted centralized wastewater system. Any questions on that before we move on?
Well, a statement maybe, um, so the reason that you're suggesting this, there, there's a little bit of logic to it, if you would just, for the public, explain that, you told us earlier, that the UDO can affect three versus four, what, and to, to take conflicts out between the future land use map.
Sure. So currently, the ordinance will only allow up to three. It's limited to three, that's all the ordinance allowed. So, so to get more than, than two dwelling units per acre, you have to have a conditional zoning, but the ordinance also lays out that for certain types of developments. So the ordinance says that all principal uses and buildable lots within a multifamily development, plan unit development, or plan development shall be connected and serviced by a centralized wastewater system. But the county engineer may approve a decentralized wastewater system upon finding that the development is not located within a service area of an existing centralized system, is subject to a wastewater operation and maintenance plan prepared by a registered engineer that establishes citing standards, performance, and monitoring requirements and a routine maintenance program, and provides tertiary treatment of sewage if cumulative wastewater flows exceed 3,000 gallons per day. Now, that was a lot on decentralized wastewater, but as an example, and our interim county manager mentioned this at the work session, Elon Vacations University Park project is one of the instances where they have up to three dwelling units per acre permitted, but they have this decentralized wastewater system there because there is no sewer available there.
Okay.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask that, so I'm glad you, about their, their project, I'm glad you brought that up.
Right, so it, it, it's, I mean, the, the ordinance already does allow this decentralized play, uh, wastewater system, so it, by removing the sewer, no sewer, it really kind of takes out a discrepancy, it's almost like, it would be, it may be difficult to go to the land use plan and the ordinance and try to figure out, well, what, what can I actually do here? And I think it would make it more clear if we take the sewer, not sewer out of the land.
You have conflicting statements, basically. Okay. Thank you, and, and, you know, as Jenny pointed out, we've, and looking at the Imagine Currituck, the future land use map, the 2040 vision plan, all of that, you know, this board kind of inherited Currituck Station when we came, when I came on here eight years ago, it was in the works, and then we adopted Currituck Station because it was a, a working project that previous boards of commissioners had worked on. And throughout that time, we realized that it's not what we're about anymore. There was some 3,000 homes potentially developable in Currituck Station. You know, we're, we're talking about 250 apartments, this is 3,000 homes, so not only that, commercial, industrial apartments, townhomes, you, you name it, was gonna be in the, in the overall project area that, should it come to fruition. So this board decided to, that that was not what Currituck County was about, and in large part, we, we listened to you, people came before us and said, you know, we want less density, and, and what you're seeing, I'm assuming up on the screen, is a reflection of that work and, and the comments that we received from, you know, people here in the audience tonight and, and at other times, that we have, we've greatly reduced densities and allowed for smaller lots, which makes more open space. So while it may be, a home is allowed on a smaller lot, what it does is opens up open space for other things, agricultural uses maybe, in, in some neighborhoods, they may end up with 40 or 50 acres set aside as open space that could now become ag instead of fallow fields. So we also took some tools out that the developers used to give them more density. We stopped wetland calculations, for instance, you can no longer, the developer count wetlands towards your density. So I just wanted to point that out because it's kind of up in front of you right now, and it's a good time to talk about it as we're, we're going through this public hearing, and we have people sign up this evening for a public comment. Any questions of Jenny?
Let me, let me, I was just gonna say, I need to move through the.
Oh, you got some more stuff?
The map change.
Oh, yes, you do, thank you.
Any questions on this?
No.
Okay, great. This was just a chart to show you how the maximum density would change after the land use plan amendment with respect to the O2 reserved lands and ag. So this was the Currytuck Station plan with the subdistricts. And here's the current future land use map for Currytuck Station area, which is all shown as G3, and the land use plan tied it to the, the plan. This was the, there were a couple different iterations shown to the board in the work session, this is the one that was, was agreed upon, that, that would be the, the map to change, so you can see the, the front portion of Currytuck Station that's adjacent to the highway will retain the G3. The land use plan is gonna say a maximum of three dwelling units per acre in this area. Then the area in the middle, which was like a transitional area, and the Currytuck Station plan will be G2. The environmentally sensitive areas will be designated as O2 preserved lands, and the rear is G1 low density growth. This is just to show you the current zoning districts, so you can understand that the impacts of changing the future land use map right now don't impact the current uses or the current zoning districts, they're all permitted, it doesn't change that. And then this is just showing you the individual parcels that are proposed to change here in the rear of the Currytuck Station area and the areas of the parcels. All right, and then I just wanted to briefly go over in your agenda packet, page 18, you can see we're striking through the Currytuck Station image of the master plan. On page 19, striking through the civic master plan for Currytuck Station. Page 20 has the densities we just talked about, page 21 is again, removing a Currytuck Station plan. Page 22 is, is the lower Currytuck land use plan page with the densities we just spoke about. Page 23 had some northern mainland implementation matrix policies, one was developed, the civic master plan for Currytuck Station, we're removing that. Then on page 24, there were policies related to economic development, and so we've left a portion of this policy in place that is recruit non-residential development and medical service providers and related businesses, so that will apply to the northern mainland, not specifically to Currytuck Station. And we felt like that captured, striking through, maintain recruitment efforts for Currytuck Station. And then I think those were all the changes to the policies, the plan related to Currytuck Station. Just wanted to run through all of those. And the planning board and planning staff recommend approval because the amendment is in conformance with the ordinance and the, the land use plan itself, including land use goal one, the transect profiles that I went over at the beginning of the presentation, as well as land use policy 1.1. I'd be happy to answer any, any more questions.
Anything for Jenny?
All right, thank you. All right. All right, uh, this is again a public hearing, so I'm gonna open up public comment. First person to have signed up this evening is Joseph Hobbs, Joe Hobbs. And I'll remind everyone, when you come up, please give your name and address so we have that for the record book, please. Good evening, Joe, it's been a while.
Good evening, good evening, back again. My name is Joe Hobbs, 278 Northwest Backwoods Road, Moayak, North Carolina, 27958. Little history about myself, formerly worked for Currituck County Health Department for 35 years as an environmental health specialist, retired in 2022, and now I'm an advocate for Northwest Community of Moayak Township where I currently reside. First of all, I'd like to say, I would like to invite all you members on the board, or future members of the board, to come and, uh, look at the area of Northwest in Moayak, observe the tremendous growth that has occurred in recent years. I stand, stand before the board to voice my concerns about this future commercial, and now I'm finding out it's actually residential as well. And the reason I'm concerned is due to the lack of vital infrastructure. We know that will occur in this project, if it does go, that will take place, but let me go over a few concerns as far as infrastructure right now in that area. There's no public county water system, water lines or hydrants that exist along Northwest Backwoods Road, and there's few along South Mills Road. There's only county water lines from like 168 to the intersection of Newtown and Camelia. But other than that, South Mills Road has no water lines. Public water is needed to provide adequate potable drinking water and water supply for fire protection. The majority of Northwest community is located over five miles from the only county fire station that exists in Moayak. I've been here twice within the last two years, voicing my concerns about our fire protection. Haven't heard much from the board, and I'm still waiting to hear from the board concerning that. Another fire station is needed to serve our area immediately, to provide adequate fire protection and emergency services, as I've been explaining and trying to explain to you all the last two years. As you know, our ISO rating, which is a rating by the state, is a 10, which is the worst that you can have, and we have the worst ISO rating in the county. Mr. White, you referenced earlier about a new fire station that is needed in Moayak. Well, I come to you now again in emphasizing that our area, Northwest community, needs a fire station. This will help our fire protection as well as help the people, current people living there with their, you know, we know homeowners insurance is out of the yin yang right now. But when I first addressed this board, it wasn't as bad as it is now, as we know. So, so we need a fire station in our area. Cable and internet service is minimal and needs improving. Current roads are very busy along, and increased traffic from Camden County, Camden County is, is just like Currytuck, as we know, is really developing, and people from South Mills come right through Northwest Backwoods Road and South Mills Road to get to 168 to get to Virginia. I, I can tell you, I can't even go out and get my mail sometimes, I had to sit in there and wait for three minutes before I can go out and get my mail, the traffic's so bad. Road ditches need improvement, cleaning out. cleaning out, and that's just something, I think we have some funds for that that have never been used to help our drainage situation as far as roads in that area. There's a current sewer plant that we all know about, Moayak Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant, which is pretty close to where this area is. I don't know if you all are proposing to use that to serve this area, but we know it's currently out of compliance with North Carolina water quality standards, and is undergoing improvements and expansion. Further upgrades will obviously be needed, wastewater treatment disposal for this proposed development, as we know is going to be one of the biggest developments that Currituck has ever had. You're talking 2,500 acres, and it's actually right on my doorstep. I can look out in front of my house to the east. All that field will be probably, future will be developed due to this proposed subdivision. I've come to you tonight, again, in much concern. Northwest community of Moayak Township has always been a rural farming community, as we know. It's been that way for hundreds of years. My wife's family has lived and farmed that area for hundreds of years. I have lived there for 30 years plus. The question I have to you all is, how will this proposed development improve the quality of life for the people who currently live in this area? I'll leave that up to you all to answer. This project, I remember years ago, the studies that were done, I don't know how much money was spent in the studies for this future project. I think it's, and it sounds like I'm against development, I'm not, but my concerns is, like I say, it's right on my doorstep. And I thought this project was defunct as we speak, or it was terminated, or
It is.
It was. It was. But now, all of a sudden, it has reappeared.
No, it's to strike it from the UDO.
We're taking it out.
We're taking it out.
It's not coming back.
We're cutting the density, like
Okay.
Not, more than in half. I mean, it's down next to nothing.
Misinformed, excuse me.
Yeah. It looks like it does because of the way of the land, right, where property is that are owned by individuals, but it's really not. That's why we're here tonight, is to cut density.
Delete it.
They're taking it away.
Yep.
So, but I hear three, three houses per acre of land is what they're proposing?
Third of a house.
A third of a house?
Third of a house. Point three.
Point three, not three.
Which is harder to get.
Keeps agricultural zoning.
Making it harder.
Well, that's good. That's good.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me. I heard it was three houses per acre. I'm about to have a heart attack, but anyway. I urge this board not to rezone, or maybe it's, you probably need to rezone after hearing that.
You want us to rezone.
Yeah, you want, yeah, point three is good.
But again, my concern, as you know, is infrastructure. We're lacking that. And we know what's going to happen when this gets developed. More and more townhouses, more residential houses, it's going to definitely place a burden on the county. I don't have to tell you all, guys, my taxes are going to go up because they're going to be building 300, 400, 500, $600,000 homes right in front of me. Okay. So to conclude with what I'm trying to get at here is, this will be a rural community transformed into a business, industrial, residential community overnight. We know how quick these builders can build these days. And you look up the road in Chesapeake, Edinburgh, Edinburgh, that's what it's going to be, right? I think you all agree right now.
That's what it was going to be. We're trying to avoid that.
Changing this to eliminate all that.
We took that off the plate.
I think we're trying to do.
Right.
We're taking it all the way, so that won't happen.
Okay.
That's what this is doing.
This concept's gone.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, that's why I'm here tonight.
Yeah.
We're doing what you want. We're getting rid of density.
Okay. If you're doing what I want, then I'm for you.
It'd already be done by now.
Right.
That's what this is doing.
The only thing I'm asking is, we need a fire department.
Get you a fire department. Right. All right.
We need a fire department.
We are, we are working on that, Joe.
You're getting me straight here. Okay. So, but anyway, it's going to be a culture shock to us guys that have lived here or lived in this area. And, yeah, it sounds like you're
We're listening.
Trying to help us out a little bit.
We listened. We heard you.
Yes, that's what this is doing.
It's James' members' fault. Yeah, you can go buy and pat him on the shoulder and say thanks.
Okay, well, thank you, James.
In fact, you should buy him dinner.
But again, again, I appreciate you listening to me, and I'll be back with the new board.
All right.
And I hate to see you all go, but there's some new ones coming in, and I'll be right here next year and still pushing.
All right. Budget season's coming up. Wear them out, Joe.
I'm going to wear them out.
Okay, good.
I'm going to wear them out, and I hope the best for you all. And thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right. Next up, I have Megan Battelli. Not in the audience?
All right. Let's see here. I'm going to murder Keith's last name. Is there Keith that signed up this evening? No, you're good?
He's waving off.
All right, he's waving off.
You didn't want to come up, too?
James, did you want to say anything tonight?
Thank you, James.
All right. Does there anybody else that would like to speak that didn't sign up this evening? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Is there any further discussion or comments, questions for Jenny this evening? Well, does the board want to adopt the changes? Is that generally that Jenny has suggested? Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Wait.
Oh, Jenny's got something.
We have to have the civic language on this one.
Yeah, inconsistency statement.
What Jenny said. No, I'm just kidding. We try.
How about, let's let the teacher do it.
Hold on.
But if you could mention the changes, that would be, that would be good.
About each, each one of them?
Um, probably just
Or can I just reference the chart?
Yeah, I think just reference the new chart.
As proposed.
I hereby move to approve and adopt by resolution PB 24-21 Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan Amendment, because the amendment is in conformance with Unified Development Ordinance and the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, G3 mixed-use centers and corridors, G2 controlled growth, G1 low-density growth, and O2 reserved land transect profiles, as well as land use goal one and land use policy 1.1, and including the changes in the chart that bring into compliance with both the land use plan and the UDO. Is that enough, Jenny?
Second.
Thank you. I want second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all.
Can we take a break?
Yes, let's take a, take a brief recess, and we'll, we'll come back and finish this All right, folks, let's get this meeting back into order and move along to our next agenda item this evening, which is old business. PB 24-19 For Farm was a conditional mixed-use residential. We had a request from the applicant to move that, to continue that to our next meeting in November, as the team could not be here this evening. And the board in the past has honored those things, if it was for a reasonable request, for a reasonable reason. Not being able to be here is fairly reasonable. With that said, Owen was not here at the last meeting, and I understand, Owen, you have watched a good portion of the previous meeting and plan on finishing up the video before we take any formal action.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I will not be voting on the continuance.
Yeah, you can vote on the continuance. You just
You can vote on the continuance. If you've watched the majority of the video and plan on watching the remainder of it, you can.
So, so we'll have a full vote on this then?
You are going to, your plan is to watch the video in between the interseating weeks and then be prepared for the next meeting so that you can participate. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So in this case, you can vote on this one, because you have watched a fair amount of it, and we're not taking any form of action that would require full viewing. Okay. With that being said, then, I will move to continue this to November 18th, 2024, for final consideration and action. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, this will be heard at our next meeting, for those that are interested in this. Up next is new business, a consideration of a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. This is near and dear to you. You're wearing green this evening, too.
Yeah, fine.
Is that
Green light.
serendipity or?
Yeah. Well, just coincidence.
All right.
Do you want me to read the resolution?
I would love it if you could do that. Would you do that for us this evening?
I would do that. This is a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas the residents of Currituck County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed services. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Currituck County seeks to honor these individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, the veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and functioning as a county veteran service officer to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal healthcare disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and transitioning service members are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas Currituck County realizes the sacrifices made by our United States military personnel while defending our freedom and beliefs, specific recognition should be accorded to them as a way to honor them for their service and demonstrate our support, which they have earned. Now, therefore, be it resolved, as we approach Veterans Day in 2024, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners declare Currituck County a green light for veterans county, and recognizes Veterans Day, November 11th, 2024, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved, that in observance of Operation Green Light, Currituck County encourages citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made the immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through November 11th, 2024. Adopted today.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yep. We've got multiple seconds and a question.
Okay. Is it, the question is, would this be for every Veterans Day going forward, or is this specific to 2024? Because this reads specific to 2024.
Yeah, we've done
Or should we just say
We do one each year for the last three years.
So do we, do we need to change this to anything, since it's for each Veterans Day?
We do it.
We're doing a new one every year.
Okay, we're going to do a new one every year?
Yeah, we reaffirm.
It's not going to make this a permanent one, though. Okay. I just didn't know if we could make it a permanent one. Would it be better to do a permanent one?
That we've done it.
I mean, is there a way to make it a permanent?
We could.
I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
I like the process.
I like the process to make it every year.
Process.
That's fine. They're reading it. I'm just asking the question. Okay.
All right.
I said second, so did Ms. Kitty. I'd like to note, my grandfather was a prisoner of war for just under two years. So, like I said, I have mad respect for the military.
All right. So we got Ms. Kitty making the second. She was quicker on the draw this evening.
She's quick.
Yes. Selena. Selena was making
Commissioner Jarvis.
Yes, she made it right.
All right. Man, you got that? We ready? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. There are none opposed. Thank you. All right. Next up is a consideration of an appointment agreement with our interim county manager to become our county manager. And I know this has been on the agenda a couple times, and to the public, it may seem like it was a little weird, and to the manager, interim manager, sorry it took a little bit long. I do apologize for that. But we had a couple legal ease matters we had to work out in this to make everyone happy, basically. So I think we have done that. The board has had time to review it. Someone like to make a motion at this time?
A motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say I will not be voting in favor of it. It's, I wholeheartedly support Rebecca. Ms. Jarvis and I fought hard for her to be our interim, and I'm happy to see her move up to the county managers, but I cannot support the salary.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Jarvis, I'd like to make a motion to approve the county manager's employment agreement.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a second. And Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. The ayes have it. Thank you. Next up is a consideration. Were there any comments, questions, or concerns about that this evening? Can I have a motion for approval, please?
I do have, I have a comment. I just had a question, and I read it. I didn't get a chance to go by my house and get my computer cord, so I did read the whole mutual aid agreement for City of Chesapeake, Byron EMS, Rebecca, or county manager. To my, is, it looks like pretty much the same as we've always done. There is no changes in that?
It is the same. The only difference is the term. Previous agreements were for five years in length, and this is through, you know, termination or suspension.
Okay. I just, like I said, it looked the same where I'd looked at it before, so I was just
That's correct.
Okay. That was my only question on that.
All right. Thank you. There's nothing further. Can we have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Can I get?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right. I will recess the regular Board of Commissioners meeting and move to move us into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney and preserve attorney-client privilege, and to preserve attorney-client privilege in the matter entitled, Currituck County versus Colesley Corporation. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll stand in recess for a few minutes while everybody gets out of here. Thank you.